Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the April 3 regular school board meeting. Tom Newkert is absent tonight. He wasn't able to be here, so I have the pleasure of cheering on this very busy evening. First order of business is a public agenda, and I understand that Dr. Morris has something he would like to add.
If I could just add the nomination of a counselor for the high school, I'd appreciate it.
Any other changes? Okay. With that change, can I have a motion to approve the agenda? Brian?
Motion to accept the agenda.
Second?
I'll second.
Okay. Dan seconds. All in favor? Six in favor and student rep in favor. Okay. Public comments? And now we are going to move on to the architect report.
Do you want to do the minutes?
Should we do the minutes first? I'm sorry. All right. All right. We'll do, I'm sorry. We'll hold on one more minute. We'll do the approval of the minutes. Can I have a motion to approve the March 20 regular meeting minutes?
So moved.
Okay. Second? Dan second. Any changes? I had one small change on page two. Under my board comment, when I talked about the performance at Johnson Theater, it should say at Johnson Theater with the high school orchestra, the middle school jazz band, and we'll talk. Any other changes? Okay. So with that, who else to accept the minutes? Okay. All in favor? Well, six in favor and student rep abstains? Or, okay. So student rep in favor. Okay. Now the architect report.
So we've been working very closely with the committee, and we wanted to bring everybody up to speed on where we are with the plans and kind of hoping that this will work. There we go. So we're getting into more of a shape for the building, which you see here on the site plan. And what we see here is a bus loop that comes off of Co-Drive and then a parking area with the field in between of two parking areas, basically to separate however you want to separate it. It could be visitors, teachers on the other side. The buses could be in the back, the linear parking lot that you see right behind where it says car drop. That's where the parents would come in. So as we separate this, the other thing we started to look at is solar panels, because we've talked about a net that they're already building. So what that means is how many solar panels can we actually fit on the site? The rectangular parking spaces that you see behind the car drop, the car drop off, that is roughly 20,000 square feet. And so then our building footprint, the piece anyway that would be not in shade and shadow on the roof, is another 18,000 square feet. So basically, we're looking at about, and these are just very rough numbers, about 30,000 square feet, plus or minus, of surface area if we were to put sort of a carport over that rectilinear parking space and put the solar panels on the roof. Given the size of the building, we started doing some very quick energy analysis, and it could be that we're looking at 50,000 to 60,000 square feet of solar panels. So we're about 20, we have about half the space, if you will. So we're still going to try to come up with some creative ways to get more solar panels. We did contact Revision Energy, Jack Rudeman from Revision Energy, and he said a solar array of that size is not a problem, and they'd be happy to talk to you about it, as would some other power purchase agreement companies. So that's what we've been looking at in terms of the site that's not building-related. And Dr. Morris has asked me to put together sort of a basis of design draft, if you will, based on owner's project requirements that talk more about the sustainability of the building and the energy analysis, and we're going to put that together. We wanted to make some calls and do some dimensioning first. So any questions on the site?
Would we need to look at some sort of leaseback?
Exactly.
Like for the, okay.
Yeah. So it is a lease to own, it is a long-term lease where you never own it, but they continue to own it. And then the third option is to buy it outright.
It's the same company, Michael, that we, the town of Durham used in turning, putting in their solar farm, so they're very used to Durham, and they did just a mini project on the maintenance building for us as well.
I just have a question trying to orientate. We see Co-Drive and Dennison, and then there's the road now that most people use, the access that intersects with Baghdad, which comes off of Mather.
Yep.
So I don't see that, and maybe I'm just not oriented right, but I don't see that on the map how that goes.
It's off the scale, it looks like.
Baghdad is just the top one.
Yeah. So up the tippity-top, right off, right off the map, Kenny.
So it's just off?
Yeah. Your house is right behind, no.
Yeah, it's just off. And Dennison was the road that we're proposing maybe to have.
Right. So I just, I talked to Town Administrator Selig, and we have a meeting next week with some of his department hits related to public safety, fire, planning, and so we'll be sharing this concept with them for the first time.
I still think that this layout looks like it has a lot of paving on the property, and I would challenge the committee to take one more look at how we can position the parking closer to the existing roadways so we don't have to take so much out of the site, which is already limited in space for driveway space.
It's difficult to do with the amount of spaces we need. It's a very tight site.
Well, there's a decision to bring the driveway down the hill in the, in the left-hand corner.
Yeah.
And that's, I think, what most impacts the amount of driveway there is.
This here, what you're talking about?
Yeah.
And then that access road right there.
Right.
Yep.
Yeah.
So I think we're at the point where we need to get our civil engineer engaged into these discussions, because I think the other thing we have to look at is the grading between Dennison. This is Dennison right here. And there is a grade change. There's a little hill here, as we know. So sometimes that length of road, we're also trying to make it so it's not steep.
Yep.
So the buses can get up and down, and the cars can get up and down, so.
Hopefully there's not buses on that side.
Yeah. But, that's right, no buses over here, just the cars. But to your point, we do need to take a look at, because anything we can minimize in terms of asphalt, savings.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah. And I know it would result in a lot of fill, but, you know, further widening the already wide spot on Dennison that's there today might be one way to do that, to make the parking lot on that side of the field instead.
So in other words, all along here?
Yeah. Make that larger.
Yeah. Yeah. We can certainly take a look at that one. Anything else, sir? So for the building, what we have tried to do, as you see here, is the aqua up at the top, that's your athletics. So that's the full-size high school gym. We're looking at bleachers that seat approximately 200 people at the moment. We have an adaptive PE space, and we have changing rooms, offices, and storage that goes along with your PE program, and that's the aqua. Opposite side is, all of the purple is your music program, and this is the front door. So as people come in the front door, they go through the administration space, meaning they can't just walk into the school. They're all vetted, similar to what you have now, in a little bit more of an organized way. And right off the main lobby is instrument storage. We had a lot of discussion with the students, we had a lot of discussion with the music program, about the students being able to come in and drop their musical instruments and secure them right by the front door, which would also be right by the music program, so they're not lugging those things around all day. It's also an opportunity for parents who drop off and pick up instruments for it to be right by the front door, so they don't have to traverse through, through the building to get there. What you see in red up front is administrative space. So everything from your principal, vice principal, to counseling, the nurse, the SRO, an office for an SRO, all of that is the red up front. The thinking behind that is we now have administration on two corners of the building, and it's welcoming. So basically, you have your eyes everywhere around the site, like we've talked about, all eyes on the front door, multiple administrators, because people get up and move around during the day. And so that gives us a lot of visibility up front. As you come through the building, there's our dining commons and learning commons. So for two lunch periods during the day, that's where the students eat, and the whole rest of the time, it's reading space and library space for the rest of the day. Up in the upper right-hand corner of this slide is the kitchen and the servary. The servary, as students come down the stairs to be served, they can either eat in the learning commons or go outside in the back of the building to eat. So that servary serves both indoor and outdoor eating. And the kitchen is situated in those roads that Michael was just talking about, you know, one of those parking lots is the access to get the service to the back of that corner of the building. Bless you.
Where's the way to get outside, if you're going to eat outside?
Right here. Yeah. What we're looking at right now are still diagrams, so we don't have doors and, and things like that shown in the plans. But when something is on an outside wall, there's opportunities there for both windows and doors. So right next to the servary is also the learning commons in terms of the library. So all of the yellow in the back of the school. So as someone comes into the building, they go through the lobby, through the dining and learning commons, and directly into the lobby, and you'll be able to see right through the school and see right through that learning commons to the back playground area and outdoor eating area and outdoor learning areas. So this yellow represents the library. There's a little, another little spot of red in the, in the back of the building. The thinking there is that if we were to move SAU offices into the building, they'd be able to share space with the library. And then the SAU office is now on a third corner of the building.
This is very different.
And so the third corner of the building now has eyes on that third corner, if you will, which allows more administrative eyes looking around the building. And then back to the servary area, if we find a spot for maybe a maintenance office or facilities director's office or something like that, that essentially gives you adult leadership on all four corners of the building, looking out in a safe and secure way for the building. So that's pretty much how the, how the first floor is currently organized. This is a work in progress. We meet every Friday to try to make things better, and hopefully, from what you've seen that we've sent in the past, this is getting better. Any thoughts about first floor? Yep?
Just a question about the recital hall. So no stage in the recital hall?
So, great question. So we met with the music group, and they talked about the fact that this is a recital hall, concert hall, however it's described, but it's all about music, not about drama performances. And so just like the, I don't know if you've been down to the museum in Boston, the Gardner Museum, and some of the other new recital halls, they don't build stages. The orchestra sits, and then the seats tear up. You have handicap seating down, and what that does down at the bottom, and then it's almost like bleachers, but performing, performance seats. What that does is it saves area from the, you normally see in ramps and handicap lifts and things like that. All of that gets avoided by not having the stage. And when we were meeting with the music group, and they were looking at the size of this and the way it was getting organized with the stage itself, they questioned, why do we even have a stage? The other thing that that does is it allows a more intimate relationship here in the middle of the floor. Your orchestra can get as big or as small without having to come in and build up sections or take down sections of stage. I think the last thing that it did was, we were basing these, our initial design, on sort of rules of thumb, if you will. And they've come back, and they've promised us to get their orchestra together, put some four dots on the floor to see exactly how much space they need when the entire orchestra gets together. And they've given us a schedule of the smaller elements of the orchestra and then the full orchestra, how many students that is. And so with that, we're able to right-size the performance area. So we're not, no longer calling it a stage, it's a performance area.
So Denise, when Ron came in, I was present during the beginning parts of his discussion with staff, and the very first meeting we had was with the music department, and Ron came in with a design for a stage. And about halfway into that meeting, the music people came, just came to the conclusion that for a music hall, they don't need a stage. So they're the ones that recommended we eliminate the stage.
And I can understand that. I'm just, I guess, just wondering if that limits the middle school in terms of, you know, maybe you want to have a presenter to come in to talk to the kids about something, you know what I'm saying? Like, while I understand that that's obviously meant to be music-oriented, that there could potentially be other sorts of presentations that come in, and I'm just, I'm just questioning if that would be.
I don't think so at all, because, you know, a presenter would be intimate to the audience, just like the music people are. What this is not designed to be is the, the high school auditorium.
Right.
So if a play is going on, that'll happen at the high school. Music is going on, that can happen here. If we have guest speakers, it could happen at either place, because either place will serve, you know, serve well for guest speakers.
And how many seats are at this point?
Right now, it's between 9:15 and 1,000.
Okay.
And the entrance and exit from both the gym space as well as the recital space, is that, are there alternatives rather than coming in through that main door?
No. So what we were trying to do was, whether it's school or community use, the building's designed to, everybody comes through that front door. There are emergency egresses out. So for instance, in the recital hall, there's a set of stairs right here that get you down outside the building from the tiered seating. And then we have another two exits here. You'll have to have three exits on a room that large. Same thing with the gymnasium. We're going to need at least three exits, so we can come in here, we can come in here, because that's connected right to the servary. So folks sitting in the bleachers would come right out, grab some snacks at halftime, and go right back. They could also come in this door, and then there'd be doors directly to the outside for emergency egress only.
So Ken, if you think about this building and how far we have to walk to the library and how far we have to walk to the auditorium from the entrance, in the new building, when you walk in, you're right on top of these spaces. So the front entrance, the way that we've been talking about the front entrance is it's part of the secure entry to the building, and that we wanted to manage all traffic through that purposefully for security. But in this particular building, once they're in, they're right on top of the gym and the, in the performing space immediately, so you're not walking miles to get there.
And I get that, and, and I know that many people who use this building, when they want to come to the gym or the, go to the performance place, they'll enter through that side entrance, which puts them right there. And then I was thinking, too, with our concept, that perhaps we're going to have this as a community space for different community usage, and, and maybe there's no solution, but we're opening the entire school when maybe all we want is the gym.
So this is, when we get further down, Ken, you'll see that it's exactly the opposite of what, what you're seeing, because you're just looking at the first floor. This first floor would be open to the community. The second and third floor wouldn't be, the fourth floor, because that's where our students are. So this, this, you're looking at, if we, if we develop the idea of this serving the community, you're looking at the space that would serve the community as you walk in without ever, ever touching classroom space.
And then, will there be some sort of a ticket office for, you know, selling either tickets for athletic events or the musical events?
Yes. Yeah. We'll make sure we have that in there.
Okay.
How many seats is the auditorium here, just for comparison?
It's five, 528.
So Ron, I noticed, too, the servary has moved since the last diagram.
Correct.
Did that, did that make the gym bigger, or did you go out farther in the back?
So actually, what was happening is the gym was oriented 90 degrees, which meant it was going out further this way.
Oh.
And we were looking at this, and things were just not well organized at that point, because it's a work in progress. But the servary in the kitchen seemed to really be squished between the stair that's there and, and the gym. And the other thing was, the question came, when the students are done eating inside, how do they get to the play area outdoors for recess? And so one of the comments that was made by the library folks in the building and a lot of the other teachers and administrators was, let's find a good way for the students to get outside and eat without having to possibly go through a stair or something like that to get outside, or to get through the library to get outside. So by making that move of rotating the gym, so now it's oriented in this direction and not that direction, it also allowed us to get the bleachers here, so when people come in, they don't have to walk across the floor.
Oh, yeah.
To watch a game. And then the servary here. So the servary now really serves food into the library, into the dining commons, and into the gym, and then obviously, anybody from the recital hall comes out into that dining commons as sort of a big lobby during those, during those sessions. And as Dr. Morris pointed out, there's, aside from the music program, PE, and library, there's no academic space on the first floor. Most students will spend the majority of their day on the second, third, and fourth floor. So it's just another way to separate or have a buffer between the community coming in and the actual regularly occupied classrooms.
The recital hall, the exterior wall, the seating comes up a significant.
Correct.
Correct. So would that just be a block wall on the outside, or it, I guess my question is, was there any consideration given to turning it 180 degrees so you could have?
We can certainly look at that.
All right.
Yeah. I think right now, though, because it is a music hall and not a drama space, we're thinking that, yes, there's solid wall up to the height of the seats, but then above that, we want to harvest as much daylighting as we can. And so we've got some great pictures from the Boston Conservatory that we also went to visit on this, which is a relatively new building. And it was very interesting to see that they have basically windows just like this all through their orchestra performance space, because that was one of the things that they were concerned about, since they were going to build a new building. They didn't see any need to have this black, you know, no daylight box, because music doesn't like that, and quite frankly, music likes, likes light, so.
Didn't that also allow you to have an opportunity to look at storage, a little bit of storage under there?
Yep. That's another great point. So this corner right here acts as our egress out, but then this corner right here could have a door on the outside which allows outdoor storage. And that could be an outdoor storage for whatever the maintenance crew and gym needs, basically, to maintain the property. So that was another opportunity, having it in this direction. This is also an opportunity to have that be a glass wall, so that when you're here, you see in, and basically now you have music in the round. And again, if this is glass here and this is glass here, you're again seeing right through and out of the building from that common area, so, which is always good to be able to see, so you don't feel like you're cramped, your sightlines go outside the building.
This isn't pressing at all, but it'll be helpful to have an estimate of the operating cost savings of moving the SAU offices in. Are you thinking this would replace the current SAU office, or is this additional space?
It would be, what I would do is repurpose the current building and put the IT department over there, because they're crowded in the maintenance building with no light. So if we move the SAU office up here, we could move the IT department across the street and give them a serviceable building to work from.
So on the second floor, we have what we call destination learning spaces. The third and fourth floor are all about teams, and you'll see the colors in a minute. But it's all about teams. So on the second floor, we have an opportunity to have more music. So the chorus room, when we met with the, with the, with the music group, they said that there's no reason the chorus can't be on an upper floor that actually then overlooks the band room. Or even as we've been thinking, maybe the chorus room goes in the center of the building, so as you come into the building, you see music right there, front and center, and then world language. And so this side of the building becomes still part of our music and world language area, and this part of the building becomes art and STEM, creating a STEAM environment, which is right upstairs from the library. And with the hole in the floor, as you come in through the building, you're able to see the library right in front of you and STEAM, or art and STEM, right upstairs. And so that was, and then both of those, art and STEM, look down into the library space. So there's really a connection between library and STEM and art. And that was, that was important as we talked to everybody in terms of how do these educational spaces connect? And that was a very strong connection that they felt was, was needed. You can then overlook, you see the balcony from the recital hall, and as you come across and you walk between world language and art, you can look down. The two violet pieces here that overlook the hole in the floor and the dining commons, as well as the hole in the floor for the double-height gym, is the health classrooms. So health classrooms basically gets all of the daylighting from the gym that's coming through as borrowed light, but they overlook the gym. And what you see here in the red is special ed and counseling, they want to be dispersed throughout the whole building. So obviously, you've seen them on the first floor, and then we've got offices for them on the second floor.
So essentially, the second floor becomes the electives, if you will, for the middle school.
So then the third floor, we just threw some color in here as we were starting the meeting to delineate four teams. So each floor has four teams, and you can use these floors however you see fit. You can group 5th grade and 6th grade, 7th grade and 8th grade, or have multiple setups, if you will. The team area in between is where they can bring the entire team together for any kind of announcements, any kind of work activities, any kind of group, large group, team lectures or discussions. And what you also see here in the middle is the student commons. So you see four stairs for four teams. So as the students come in the building, you're not taking 700 students and kind of setting them up one or two stairs and then have a backfire stair or such. You essentially have four stairways, one stairway for two teams, because as the team goes up. So what that means is, if you wanted to put this area here as the 5th grade, and then upstairs is the 5th grade again, then that stair becomes dedicated to the 5th grade, and one grade is right above the other. If you want to have the purple and the green be 5th grade, then maybe 5th and 6th use this stair, 6th grade being upstairs, 5th grade being downstairs. There's all sorts of different ways you can do it, knowing that you have one team and one stair. The stair themselves are on the outside of the building, because we talked about purposeful movement in the building with the teachers and with the students. So as they're going up and down that stair, these stairs want to be designed almost like greenhouses, so there are plants in the stairs and there's lots of daylighting and glass. So you don't feel like you're in a stairwell moving up and down, but you really feel like you're in a really nice space, and the students obviously move and exercise as they're going through the building. That dashed line right there represents a glass wall, so that when the students are out here, either using the restrooms or meeting with the specialists or going to their lockers, there's still an acoustic separation, yet it's completely wide open for visibility and for oversight. The middle of the building is the same on both sides. We have faculty rooms on each side. There is a.
Both floors, right?
Yep. Both floors. So essentially, there's four faculty rooms, two per floor and one per two teams. We have. We have, in, in the team organization, we have these special ed resource rooms, um, and then we have two breakout spaces. So every team gets a resource room plus two, uh, breakout spaces that can be used. And then we have a specialist. So there's four specialists, um, two math, um, and two, so there's two math and two reading. And so we have basically a reading and a math specialist on each floor. And then we were talking about this little yellow space here being a breakfast nook. When we met with food service and we met with the students, you know, they talked about how they eat today, um, where they have to go and where they don't have to go, and how many students actually eat breakfast. And the fact that when the middle school students show up prior to classes starting, it's more of a social event, and then they get to class and realize, we haven't eaten. Um, and so this is an opportunity to bring food upstairs into the team areas, um, so that the breakfast is readily available, uh, if they want to grab, you know, a breakfast sandwich or something like that when they get up to their locker, so they can have the social hour but also not miss a meal. And that, a breakfast nook would also be a vending, you know, we talked about maybe having a fruit vending machine or, you know, some kind of vending that the students can access to, uh, all day long. The fourth floor is identical. The fourth floor is set up identical, where we have four teams, four stairs, and the core of the building in the student commons remains the same. So, I think it's been, um, a real good process to date. We do have to now take this and go back to the faculty. Uh, we have to get the students engaged again to get their ideas. Uh, but that's, you know, it's, it's one big work in progress. Um, but we are shooting for the beginning of mid-May to have a very strong schematic design, so everybody sees exactly, uh, what it is we're talking about. And we are developing right now interior views of that common area in the middle of the building that we've talked about, um, interior views of what the recital hall might look like, and we've got to sit down with the faculty to start talking about the concept design for the classrooms. Um, and then we can do a vignette of that, and obviously, we have some exterior sketching, uh, going on, that we're gonna meet with the committee next Friday to review.
Any questions?
What, um, how many more office spaces are there here than would currently be needed, or would be needed for the current middle school staff?
I don't.
I'm not sure what you're asking, Michael.
How many, how much room for growth in the faculty is there? When, when I hear you describe the, the office and program spaces, it sounds like it's designed for what we have for today.
Mm-hmm, yes.
And so that means if we want to add something, then something else has to give. We have to take something away or, or shrink something.
Well, hopefully, the building is designed in a flexible way where you can add the office. So you see all this, you know, these common areas that we're talking about here, and then again on the second floor. You know, it is important for you to be able to modify this, because we all know it's not gonna stay the same, right? For, for decades. Um, things will change, and as things change, like, for instance, you could put another office here, um, on each floor. You could decide to do breakfast a different way and open up that space. Instead of having a breakfast nook, you could make that into an office. On the first floor, the same thing. We've talked about, I think there is space for an additional counselor, um, in the building, or there was some discussion about how many counselors you have now versus how many you already plan to have when the, when the building opens. But I wouldn't necessarily, that's built for future, but built for when it opens.
So I, I think I actually asked this question the last time, which is what I said is that when you do our long-range planning, we only go out ten years, and it's approximately the error at ten years out is, call it ten percent. And so what I said is, looking at this plan, what does it look like, plus or minus twenty percent, which is what you're just asking, right? It's like, if the school, I mean, who knows what'll happen in thirty years, maybe the birth rate changes and it explodes, and, and therefore we experience a growth of, so asking those two, those are the two extremes I would throw out there, not just if we grew twenty percent, but what if we shrunk twenty percent, how would this building, so? I think that's kind of the question I asked last time.
Well, and I, and I, maybe I'm not so much worried about that much, you know, the extremes of the potential student population change, but more about programming, because even if the student population is the same, which is what we expect based on long-range planning.
Right.
We're gonna continue to find additional needs and opportunities. You know, it's, it's been, um, technology integrators, it's going to be probably world language, there are going to be things like that that we want to add, and if we only design the space for what we have today, then we're gonna start off and two years down the road be remodeling.
But I, again, inclusive in growing twenty percent, you're gonna add staff. So you mean, so it kind of.
That's a whole different equation if we get that.
No, but when you think of that, so if you're thinking of adding staff, it's kind of what you're saying, because you may add technology integrators or anything.
Yeah.
If you assume there's a twenty percent growth in student, there's a, therefore a, a growth in staff that's gonna go along with that. So that kind of.
Yep.
How do you accommodate a growth in staff of that size? So it's kind of the same question, I think.
Good question for us to ponder, because there's no answer tonight for that, because we were, we were estimating the student population based on the long-range planning of being pretty consistent, but we assumed that this building would hold seven hundred students, which is about, um, forty more students than we have today. So, you know, I think we have to think about that some more, Michael. I mean, we, we definitely can, we, when we built the world language piece, we made an assumption that potentially we would expand into the fifth grade, so that's, that's incorporated. But in, in terms of other programs, I, the, the middle school seemed a pretty stable unit, um, overall. We did, we did put in an extra counseling space just in case. But really, those are the only two things I could see on the horizon, and beyond that, I, I don't know what more the, this, what more staffing we would need for the middle school.
I think to Michael's point, um, years ago, before the enhancement of our music program, perhaps that drive for that performance recital space would not have been so huge, but with the tremendous growth in strings and our music participation. It's become paramount, so such a big part of the building is now geared to that. And I think what Michael is saying, and I think astutely, is that there are things on the horizon, and we might know what they are, and, and I think Michael's just asking, and I would share, what is the flexibility? Kind of like on the town side when we plan for the hundred-year storms.
That's a better way to put it, yeah.
That's what, what I think, what we're trying to do.
My assumption when I saw the, um, SAU space on here, obviously, was that we would be moving out of the existing SAU office space, so that makes, and I, I understand that's not what your, the current thinking is, but is there a possibility to add a partial fifth floor to consolidate administrative space here? Um, the, the capital plan includes a large number of upgrades to the current SAU office space based on its age and, and maintenance status, so, um, is it worth consolidating?
Well, one of the, one of the reasons that I asked Ron to think about putting the SAU office in the middle school is, um, well, there's a couple of reasons. One, I think it does enhance the security of the building by having another corner covered, but originally, it was to put the SAU office in conjunction with students. Um, I always, philosophically, I've felt that the superintendent's office should be much, much closer to students than the current SAU building, and this provided the opportunity to bring SAU administration closer to kids. So that was really what drove it initially. It wasn't necessarily about the cost of running the SAU building. The utilities to run the SAU building are pretty minimal, but the structure itself is pretty tired. And so when you look at the capital plan, you know, we do have to put some money into that building, and I questioned whether it was money well, well-spent, um, if we could occupy, uh, a, a space in, in the new middle school. I will say something that I said to Todd, because when I was superintendent in Portland, the SAU was part of the CTE Center, and as the, um, Casco Bay High School was their alternative high school, so they had three high schools in Portland, and Casco Bay High School started to grow pretty dramatically. And it was easy for me to see the superintendent's office leaving the building in order for that student growth. So, you know, that speaks a little bit to the question you were asking. I mean, if, if student and staff need, um, started to grow, the first thing I would suggest is that the SAU office is in the way. Right now, it can occupy that building with a projection of seven hundred students pretty well, but if we were using ALs plus or minus twenty percent, um, obviously, minus twenty percent, there'd be plenty of room, but if we actually grew by twenty percent, um, that would be one big middle school that nobody's projecting, um, in its, at this point. So, you know, I, I do get the idea of what you guys are talking about. I'm not, you know, I'm not trying to be, um, contrary. I just, um, think that as we look at this building, you would have to flex out space if you were gonna grow, so the first space I would flex out would be the superintendent's office, because that's the logical thing to push out in order to make room for kids. Um, in terms of office space, I think there's plenty of space in this building to create new office space, if that's what we needed, like new additional special ed spaces. I think that can be a relat- relatively easy thing to accomplish. Um, but if we're talking ALs point of that kind of growth in students, the building's too small. And that's just the reality of, of twenty percent, there's no way.
Yeah, no.
And the community wouldn't support us building.
No, I hear ya.
A, a school that's, that, you know, we're projecting at six hundred and sixty, we're building for seven hundred, they would, they would crucify us if we said we wanted to build a building for eight fifty just in case.
Do, well, of course, especially given the decline of.
Yeah.
Of birth rate.
So I think my, I, 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 I understand the question, and I certainly, I think it's worth bringing back to the committee and struggling with a little bit, but it hasn't been our primary focus yet.
And, um, kind of, um, maybe related to that, probably not, and probably a ridiculous thought, but when you turn off of Baghdad and you come to the current middle school, and it's land that is very precious, and trying to have flexibility, there are two houses there. One is currently for sale, and one is a student rental. Does it make sense for the school board and Oyster River Community School District to think about trying to buy that property, because that adds a tremendous amount of real estate that gives us more flexibility in the future for, for many things, whether it's less concrete.
Yeah, Kenny, it's not, it's not a crazy idea at all. It's a conversation that's been happening in the district since the high school was, um, built, because there's all kinds of property at that point, had the district bought on, bought at the time, would have allowed more elbow room for fields and so forth, but, um, it's really hard to contemplate buying property, because for a school system, you need a warrant in order to, um, purchase property. And so I, I, the idea is absolutely the right idea, it's just the timeliness of being able to do anything in terms of purchasing is such a, you'd have to say to a buyer, um, we're interested in your property and, um, you know, the vote's in March, and whether people are willing to do that, it would be, you know.
Right, to try to get the ducks in a row.
Right.
Accomplish it.
But, yeah, I think anytime that we, we could purchase property around the middle school, around the high school, we should be looking at it. We did look at the property remember across the street from the high school, but it, the grades were so severe that it would have cost, cost the taxpayers hundreds, upon hundreds of thousands of dollars to be able to utilize that, that space. So, uh, that, however, is pretty level with, you know, Dennison, and, you know, would be ideal property for us to own.
I, I'm just thinking, though, you know, and I understand, obviously, you can't build a school for eight fifty when the projection is nowhere near there, but just in terms of if down the road at some point it needed to be added on, you know, is there a possibility at all, because it's such a tight space, you know, or is, or is this it, you know? And if it, if this is it, then, you know, obviously, that would mean that, you know, worst-case scenario, there would have to be another kind of solution. Maybe that would mean bringing fifth grade back to elementary schools or something like that down the road, you know what I'm saying? So I mean, I could foresee that, because you don't know what happens twenty, thirty years down the road. Um, but, you know, I, I would imagine that we could look at those possibilities if it wasn't possible to say, oh, yeah, well, there's room for expansion in this corner or what have you.
Could, could it go up?
Yeah, there's.
Exactly. So Michael had brought this up, um, a little while back about if we stay on the existing site, are we limited? Does it, does it expand? And so in, in this design on the second floor, you see that that space, um, right now is an opening down to below. So you easily, not easily, but we're talking about, you know, a flexible and adaptable building is the goal, so how do you adapt this building? Uh, you put floor joists in here, and that becomes a floor with outdoor windows. You also have an opportunity to leave this the way it is. These are roof areas right here. And so what we were thinking was, these would be great roof areas for art outside on the, on the, obviously, you know, almost like a patio, if you think with railings and such and being secure. Same thing for art and for STEM. But in the future, these rooms can be reconfigured or reconfigured. That's not gonna live that one down. Um, and then, reconfigured, um, to get more space, so you could get two classrooms in this area, two classrooms in this area. As you then go upstairs, um, those areas keep going. So these two rooms right here would go away, but then you'd have a room and a room and a room and a room. And so you could do that on the third floor and the fourth floor. So if we just think a little bit about that now and size the foundations and the columns so that in the future you can come and put up the new steel and put up the new floors and put that stuff up, then what you have is, is a design, not necessarily, you know, the design that says, here's your plan for future classrooms, but you have the possibility to make it very easy, um, to do this. Uh, you also have a geothermal system. The nice thing about geothermal systems is they're very easy to add on to. You just drill a few more wells.
Right.
Um, and your backup boiler would be sized for however you need it to be sized. Um, because if, if we size that now in a hybrid system to pick up fifteen percent or those extra cold days where you don't want to drill those wells, then that's still there, and that never changes. Um, and so we had thought about the concern of, it's a tight site, which way do we go? The answer is we go up. And what that means is, whenever you do that in the future, there's no earthwork involved, um, and so there's future savings. If, if you were just like gonna put a wing on a building, um, and you got built-in swing space. So, I, you know, I think that still a lot of work to do, still a lot of thinking of this and planning of this, but we are trying to keep that in mind.
Yeah.
As we organize the, the spaces that we're doing.
Is a fifth floor? I know, I know that would create a lot of going up and downstairs, but from a structural perspective, is a fifth floor an option?
I can find out. Yeah, I think, if you have solar panels on the roof, those would get relocated. Uh, we do have, right above this area right here, we're thinking of a roof monitor, not skylights, but sort of a pop-up with clear-story lighting. Um, and then again, with a few holes in the floor upstairs so that we're bringing natural light into the core of that building, of that two-story, uh, student space. But even that could be moved. In fact, I'm doing that right now at the Wolfboro Library. Got rid of their roof monitor. Put a different roof on the building with solar tubes. So lots of different, um, ideas and alternatives that we can do in the future, um, taking a look at the simplicity of the design and how do we go up. The nice thing about that is if you add a fifth floor, it still meets code. If you went to sixth floors, it becomes a high-rise.
Yeah.
All different ball of wax. So you can add one floor, because the, the building itself would most likely be a type two A, um, or one B to begin with. And so that would, that would accommodate both a four-story building and a five-story building.
Does, moving the SAU office to that corner, so I know that wasn't the original idea, how does that affect access, and is it enough square footage still that you?
Yeah, so, um, Ron and I have been talking about the conference room for SAU facing the library with a collapsible wall, and so when we would have board meetings, the conference room would become the boardroom, and we'd open up right into the library. So we'd take advantage of the library being there. So, we'd take advantage of the library being there rather than, you know, trapping the superintendent's office in a corner with a hard wall, utilizing the space in, in a way that we use this room, except it would be permanent.
But how would you, if someone was coming to the SAU office to have a meeting or whatever, how would they, they go in the main entrance and someone has to go get them?
Yep, exactly. And that also contributes to, to the safety aspect of the building because every person would be greeted by the front office, Jay's office, if you will. They have an appointment with the superintendent or Sue or somebody in the office. Then, we'd go out and meet them and bring them down. So, always, there would be security going on where the current building--
You don't have your own door, separate door?
We would have an outside door for staff, but we would use, for visitors, we would use the, the front, front entrance. So, we're trying deliberately to drive all traffic to the front of this building for security reasons.
Okay.
Any other questions? Well, thank you very much.
Great questions. Thank you very much, but very helpful.
Thank you, Ron.
Yep, thank you.
And do you have presents for me? You can, you can leave them and I'll, and Todd, Todd will take care of them for me. Thank you.
Okay. So, we are announcements, commendations, and comments from the district?
But it was older than what he presented. It was not the same.
Good evening. David Goldsmith from Moheramit. I want to give you some updates on some announcements that I made at the last school board meeting. Since that time, we did have our pancake breakfast. It was this past Saturday. It was a wonderful success. The jazz band has been in Florida, so this was a pancake breakfast without the jazz band, which was sad from a jazz band perspective. Definitely changed the tenor of the pancake breakfast a little bit. We had a tremendous amount of people attend. We had wonderful entertainment, Grimes Dance, who's been there for many years, Quest Martial Arts, some local community members and staff members playing music. We had some students playing music. We had a group from the high school raising money. We had a social and emotional learning table set up. We had, and 68 Hours of Hunger having a table. So, we had a lot of community and high school and town tables there. We also had a booth set up run by Dr. Morris and Mr. Allen advertising about and giving information about the middle school project, and that was very well attended. That was right in the main thoroughfare of everyone coming to the pancake breakfast, getting to stop and talk to either Dr. Morris or Mr. Allen, seeing some of the design drawings, getting to talk about what was going on. And so, I think that was a real big success for people to be able to talk to the superintendent. We began our construction project at Moheramit on Monday. That's also gone really well. The students, staff, families, visitors have all been very flexible with the new entrance to the school through the West Wing, having to come to the office. Students have been incredible, as have staff with the demolition noise that has been going on. The crew, the construction crew has been very respectful to our school. There's clearly noise that's going to happen when there's demo happening, and the students have just been really more interested in knowing what's going on than annoyed by it. They've been doing a great job. And that's just moving on, on schedule. And then, of course, next week on April 10th, Wednesday, we have the free spaghetti dinner at Moheramit with the presentation about the middle school happening. That's also in conjunction with a Moheramit PTO meeting. The timing for that is 5:15 to 6 for the spaghetti dinner, 6:00 to 6:45 for the presentation about the middle school, and then 6:45 to 7:30 for the PTO meeting. There will be childcare provided as there was at Mastway. And so, we're looking forward to a lot of people coming out to hear a more formal presentation by the district about the middle school. Any questions on any of that or anything else? Thanks very much.
David, when's the last reminder you sent out to the community on the, on the supper?
We sent one out today. We're going to send them out again this week and then at the beginning of next week as well.
Okay, thanks.
Yep.
J. Shire, principal of the middle school. Just a couple of quick notes. As David mentioned, the jazz band was not at the pancake breakfast because they were down in Disney World for a performance. I got a report from Dave Irvin this morning, what an exceptional job, no surprise that the kids did. It was a late night for them. They didn't get back last night until about 1:30 in the morning. So, a lot of tired kids today, and what it was a great trip. Few weeks, I'll be on a bus with 128 graders to head down to Washington DC over April break, so I'm looking forward to that. And just wanted to highlight a quick collaborative effort to our neighbor Barrington. They did approve a world language program. They're going to attempt to hire two world language teachers. So, I actually had a staff member, one of my world language teachers, go over there today to help with interviews because they've never had a world language program before. And the principal, Terry Leatherman, and his curriculum director are actually going to visit our middle school next week, which is exciting to see what I think is a tremendous middle school world language program. So, just a quick example of collaboration with our neighbors.
So, that will for sure be happening in the fall?
That's their plan.
What, what are they planning to offer?
What's that?
You know what languages they're planning to offer?
They advertise for French, Spanish, and Latin. So, it's one of those things where you just kind of try to find someone that's highly qualified to do that. I mean, I've mentioned that over the issue of the board. That's, can be a challenge in terms of hiring the kind of people we want working with kids. So, exciting stuff.
Thank you.
Good evening. Lisa Hupp, Transportation Department. I wanted to acknowledge some of our bus drivers. This past Friday, I attended the annual New Hampshire School Bus Driver Safety Awards banquet put on by NHSTA and New Hampshire DOT. And they honor school bus drivers in five-year increments of safe driving, preventable accident-free. And this year, we had seven of our drivers receiving awards. Three of them received five-year awards, one received a 20-year award, one received 25-year award, 130, and 135-year award. Next year, we hope to have a 40. So, thank you.
That's wonderful. Wow. Any other district, please? Board announcements, commendations? Yes?
I have a couple, actually. So, there, I'm losing track of the dates, but it was like a week ago from last Saturday. The, in the library, there was the Human Book Project. And the Human Book Project, I think it started in Europe, and the idea of the Human Book Project, really, it kind of goes buried in this thing about diversity that we're supposed to be doing, is you're supposed to have people that are very different from yourselves and that make, potentially make you feel extremely uncomfortable, and it's an opportunity where you sit down and have a conversation and learn about them. And so, you literally, there was, you know, people with disabilities, transgender, brain injuries, vegan, you know, it was a mixed religious group. And what you do is you check out for 30 minutes that person, you sit down and talk. And so, I did an hour, my first half hour was with Aziz, who's a UNH professor in economics, and we talked about what it's like to be Muslim in post 9/11 America. And we really spent a lot of time talking about Yemen and United States is really participation in genocide currently. And then, the second half hour, I picked, I thought I picked the toughest one I could get, which was Jessica, which was a transgender woman. We talked about her transition. It was really pretty profound. And I think, you know, when we talked about, we had that group come in before and talked about training and standing up when you see discrimination occurring, and she had this really amazing tale. So, it, it's just mind-boggling to me how difficult it is for somebody to go out in public as they're transitioning and facing that hump. And so, what she told me is she'd gotten comfortable enough and things, nothing had gone wrong, and she was like, "Wow, this is easier than I thought." And so, she went to a restaurant and she sat down and as the waitress came up to her, of course, the worst-case scenario happened, the waitress was like, "There's no way I can serve you. You're a total freak," and made a humongous scene in the restaurant. And Jessica was like, you know, just floored. I mean, it was her worst-case scenario. And another waitress said, "You know, I only see another customer. I'll take that section of the restaurant and, you know, I'll take your tips, by the way." And, and she helped Jessica. She's like, "You're going to be okay. What do you want to eat?" And kind of made everything okay. And I said, Jessica, I said, "Well, that's, to me, the gold standard. That's what we really are trying to achieve when we talk about diversity." So, I thought it was a really, really, really good project. I think it's something to keep in mind in the future for the district. The Mouth of the River actually wrote it up. And then, the second thing, I had this weird week of like social justice last week. So, the other thing was the UNH Multicultural Center, Lou Farrell hosted what's called Safe Zone Training, which is on gender identity, and I passed all the stuff along to Todd. And so, it's, it's designed really, it can either be for faculty, for students, but in this case, it was for businesses and nonprofits in downtown Durham. Lou is, Lou identifies as "they," which threw me off. I'm like, "Wait a second. How can you use a plural pronoun if you're a single person?" But it's really interesting discussion about gender and identity. And the, the thing that you learn particularly, particularly transgender, is how hypersensitive they are about their environments because it's such an incredible obstacle to be in an environment. And so, the Safe Zone Training really is about gaining awareness about that. And, and something as simple, by the way, as a sticker, which is the Safe Zone Training, really lets, you wouldn't think, I would never notice this walking into a business, but it, they do. And it means a profound amount that they know somebody's had training and that that's a safe place for them to come in. So, I, I thought it was really, really an excellent, excellent opportunity, and I say, I think it would be a great, Lou is a phenomenal public speaker, told about his experiences transitioning and all of that. So, I think it's a, it's an excellent opportunity for both of our students and our staff, and it goes directly along with what's buried in here.
Other board questions?
Yeah. Thank you for that, Al. I mean, that's, sounds like incredible experiences. And just anecdotally, in my practice, I am prescribing hormones for people who are transitioning. And when you see a patient, you need to enter a diagnosis. And when you go to transgender, it says transgender disorder, and there is no way to enter, this is just who somebody is. So, it shows the battle. I'm, you know, I know a couple of years ago, we made our policy, but what a struggle and to bring that issue forward. I appreciate that. My second thing is how amazingly disappointed I am with the New Hampshire School Board Association, with the efforts led by Tom Newkirk and, and also you, Dan. And the response that we get, got from them, I thought was meaningless, spacious, almost insulting. And I, you know, we, we were just talking about the middle school plan, and we're talking about funneling people in the front entrance and posting people of authority at corners. And here, you can carry a gun in. And knowing the political makeup currently, we have a Democratic House, we have a Democratic Senate, and perhaps the bill that we would like to see that is limiting guns in our school might pass. But I worry with our Commissioner of Education and our Governor, is there veto lurking? And I think our efforts of writing the letter were great. I think our efforts, New Hampshire School Board Association were great. But maybe it's time that we think about trying to lobby Governor Sununu and Commissioner Edelbert in explaining how ridiculous it is that we're spending all this money to harden our schools, yet we're allowing people to walk into our schools with guns. Because it would be devastating to have the bill pass that we would like to see pass and have a governor veto that bill. And I don't know what our other options are, but I think we should do something more and not give up the fight. It's crucial.
Any other board comments?
I'm just curious as to what the reaction was at the booth at the pancake breakfast. How did that go? What was the response from the people that you were speaking to?
It was, it was incredible. I mean, Michael was there and he saw me mobbed by people as he was running, running after his, his topple ganger. Michael's son is just like the spitting image of him. I tease him all the time. The, the people were like super enthused, super excited. They had really great questions. You know, they were specially, you know, engaged if they had a second or third grader because they know that the child would benefit from the new school. If they had an older child who went through, they would talk about the need. I mean, it was really, just by Todd and I being there that morning, it just, I think it was an amazing opportunity. I would say it was equal to the presentation we did at Mastway, but much more personal, one-on-one. So, we have other activities coming up. In May, we're going to focus in on the, on the orchestra performance. We'll do a supper before that and talk about the performance hall. And so, we have a, we developed a pretty comprehensive communications plan that we'll be sharing with you guys that will take us through the summer. Then, in the summer, we'll look at what's coming up in the fall, but it's going to, it can give us plenty busy. I have not had a single person say to me yet, "This is a stupid waste of money." I think people know the building, it's time, and it's, it seems to be receiving a really good response from people. Seniors stopped and said, "Yeah, we know this building is old." You know, so it was, even people who didn't have children in the school who had stopped for the breakfast because they had grandchildren or nieces, or they just wanted to have pancake breakfast at Moheramit because they've done it before. There were a lot of people who stopped. I mean, I didn't keep a net account, but I knew I was talking constantly for three hours.
Moving on, Assistant Superintendent report?
You have in your board backup a document called Questions from the, hold on a second, what's it called? Questions from the cohort, which is related to Chris Hall's sabbatical. I'm sharing that with you for a couple of reasons. One, it was really, I shared it with the entire staff at large and has all the different questions that people are, are researching. And it's really, really engaged staff and some dialogue. All of the, the members in the cohort are in the process of setting up blogs where they're going to be blogging about their research, and so, it's, it's, it's pretty exciting stuff. There, all of these projects will have the opportunity to do a presentation at the end of the year. They're scheduled, and there'll be a lot more detail to come on this, and I will make sure you have specifics because they haven't divided up which days, which presentations are going to happen. But they have three dates set for May 21st, May 28th, and June 4th to do six, six presentations at each of those. The presentations are about 20 to 30 minutes each, but it will be an opportunity to hear the teachers who've been spending their entire year researching these questions, share what they've learned and share it with their colleagues. Really exciting stuff, so clearly, board members will be invited to that as well, so please keep that in mind. And another thing that came out of this project, which was very exciting, Chris, at the beginning of the research, was discussing it with all of the action researchers. Gee, this, wouldn't it be kind of neat to do, to present our findings at a national conference? So, on a lark, they submitted our proposal to the NCTE, which is the National Teachers of English, and they've been, been accepted to present in Baltimore next fall, all the great research they're doing. So, not all of the projects, but it's, they're presenting on the concept of this action research cohort. And it's really, I think, great kudos to the work that's going on because this is sort of very unusual professional development that's going on, very exciting stuff. And Chris and I are in the process of trying to work out a plan to continue this once he's no longer on sabbatical because obviously, that's the key is to, because everybody in the cohort wants to keep going. It's a matter of how can you keep it going without having a full-time person sort of shepherding it along? So, we're, we're sorting that out, but very exciting stuff. Second thing I wanted to mention to you, and actually kind of follows up on something Jay said, he was talking about the world language department being actively involved with Barrington collaboratively at last night's Barrington School Board meeting. A group of our, Leslie Ayers, Barb Milliken, and Michelle Pennelli presented the, similar to the presentation they gave you a year and a half ago, but with, added on top of that, a series of recommendations to assist Barrington to help determine their path forward to kind of answer Michael's question about what's the language they're going to do. After last night, they heard from a Latin teacher from Burick Academy and the Oyster River Spanish and French-- River Spanish and French teachers. And I think they've arrived at, they're going to pick the language that has the most passionate, excited, engaging teacher. So they did interviews today, and as Jay mentioned, Michelle Pennelli participated in that process. And I'm sure Michelle will be able to tell us, "Who did you hire?" And that will tell us what language they decided to do. But it's an absolute, they're going forward with it, they have two positions. So moving forward, Barrington will be on this, in many ways, on the same page as Oyster River is when they had arrived at Oyster River High School. On a similar note relating to Barrington, Barrington started a collaborative meeting that Oyster River High School, Co-Brown Academy in Dover, all participated in with representatives from Barrington. It was a really great thing. It was held at Barrington Middle School last month. And basically, it was an opportunity for all of the different subject disciplines to talk about what the needs of their programs were, share with each other. I think it was a great opportunity for Barrington to learn about how they can better have their kids ready to be at Oyster River, but it was also an amazing opportunity for us to engage in conversation with our colleagues at other schools and learn a lot. So it was a really great thing, and that's an ongoing thing that Barrington is intending to host. And Oyster River clearly, as long as we're involved with Barrington, will want to be a part of it. Last thing I want to mention, I was hoping to be standing here tonight to tell you, I just sent out the REACH catalog, and I was going to actually stand here and do this big thing, or I pushed the button. We've run into a technical glitch. So it's going to go out tomorrow morning. So the REACH catalog will be out tomorrow morning. When it comes out, check it out. It is amazing. We have just an incredible range of activities. You know, and I'm hoping we'll fill them all, because with the two extended school year programs here at the middle school, we'll have, like, the entire place, like, jamming with people. So it should be a very fun summer coming up. So be on the lookout for the catalog. So thank you.
Todd, can I ask a question?
Yes.
In, one of the documents we have in our folder talks about the Barrington student enrollment.
Yes.
And our enrollment was not as high as we had anticipated. And I don't know if that's either based on the population of Barrington, and how many kids they have going to high school, or whether it's choice. But in addition to that kind of collaboration that you discussed, which I think is wonderful, should we be thinking of ways to market Oyster River to parents and students who are at that step of making, starting to begin that process of making choices? Is there anything we can do better?
We absolutely are looking at that issue. Suzanne and Heather and the high school staff have had lots of contact with Barrington, in fact, and they've been over to visit. They've hosted tours at the high school. In fact, I know Suzanne was talking with Terry Leatherman just the other day, about are there any kids still on the fence that we could reach out and offer any additional guidance and information to help them make their decisions? I think this year, there's no question that the brand-new Dover High School did have an impact on our enrollments, and I think the newness of that certainly had an impact. But we'll find out what the trend is over the long haul. But I do think, yeah, you're right, we do need to maintain that contact with Barrington and really be trying to provide them as much as we can to make sure families have all the information they can get in order to come to us. I would say a lot of the kids that are choosing Dover right now, like I said, it's the facility, but a lot of times, it ties into desire to be involved in the career technical programs, which are housed right there, and minimizing that. So there's a certain population that there's only so much salesmanship you can do, because they're looking for a program. And from a, if I were a Barrington parent, and by the way, my grandkids are Barrington students, and they will ultimately, one day, be in this situation, they have the best of all worlds. They have three choices so that they can find the right match for their kids.
And I think that's all fair, and certainly, we have our academics to promote.
Absolutely.
Our kind of burgeoning wellness, mental health kind of thing.
Yes.
We have our athletics.
Absolutely.
I wouldn't neglect our food services, because I remember when my daughter was looking at college.
That's an interesting thought.
When she went to eat at the different places, that kind of made something. And I think our food service is stellar.
It's funny you should say that. When my son was touring colleges, I remember when we discovered this really good pizza at the Memorial Union Building of the particular university, that rose to the ranks of his top choice. It's interesting you should mention that. Food could be used. Are you hearing this, Suzanne? Okay. Thank you.
Superintendent's report.
Well, since Kenny asked the question about enrollment, I would just say, let's continue down that path and go over what we're seeing right now. So the kindergarten has grown 18 students since registration. So that's changing the dynamic quite dramatically. And I gave you a copy of where we saw the enrollment. So right now, we have, as of today, 62 students planning to attend Massway and 52 students planning to attend Moheramit. So I'll leave that for a second, and then come down to the Barrington issue, which Kenny raised. The Barrington issue is one of these issues that, right now, is continuing to fluctuate. So like, three weeks ago, it was 50. And then kids who had choices between Co-Brown, Dover, and us, nine of them, or eight of them, made a different decision. There's still kids on the fence, and Suzanne said to me yesterday that she plans on going over and trying to convince some of those kids to come to Oyster River. So this actually kind of settles into a place where I thought we would be when we first made the agreement with Barrington. I thought we would hover in around 170, 175 students. I do think that the new Dover High School has played a factor this year. And so I wanted to make sure that, although this is the number as of today, we'll be monitoring this over the next many weeks to see if this is where it settles, or whether it'll grow a little bit more, or whether it doesn't grow a little bit more. So I wanted to make sure the board was aware of that. But nine students is $151,128 tuition dollars that we were planning on in the next budget that we wouldn't have. One of the other things that David and Carrie and Todd and I decided was, in order to take the pressure off grades three and four, David is going to, again, go with a multi-grade three, four. And that opens up the opportunity for the parents that we said couldn't go to their closest school last summer. It opens up the opportunity to invite them back to either of the schools. So we did have youngsters who lived close to Moheramit that we are sending all the way to Massway, and we had youngsters who were close to Massway that we sent all the way to Moheramit. And, you know, on the surface, that is a bizarre thing to do, but what we were trying to do is protect the class sizes based on Policy 2B, or IIB, which, you know, we try to keep class sizes reasonable in the upper elementary at about 22 to 1. But even with the three, four combination, the class sizes in the upper elementary are all going to be pushing towards that limit as we speak. So the issue for us really is the kindergarten. And of course, with the new addition at Massway, we do have room for kindergarten there. But what I, what I would recommend at this point is that we watch the kindergarten enrollment over these next several weeks and come back to this issue. Because part of it is, if I, if I, and I'm leaning in this direction, but if I recommend a seventh kindergarten, then I also need to figure out how I can recommend to you we can pay for it. And I don't have that tonight. And I want to watch what's happening in both schools over these next several weeks. But even at these numbers, there's, if these numbers were where we were a month from now, I would be in the position of recommending to you that we need the seventh kindergarten. These numbers go up, there's no question, right now, to me, there's no question. My question is, I haven't had enough time with these numbers, because literally, these are updated as of today, that Sue and I haven't been able to go through the budget and figure out how we would recommend to you the seventh teacher, and then answer the question that you always ask, how are we going to pay for it?
Totally.
So I need time to do that. And so I just wanted to plant the seed today, tonight. I'm doing my Johnny Appleseed routine. I'm planting a seed. Then just in related issues, the health insurance did.
Can I just ask about enrollment?
Sure. Kenny, yep.
Just, I'm trying to make sure I understand things correctly. We, looking at Massway, when we ended in June, we had 71 kids in kindergarten, but the current first grade class, which would reflect those kindergartens, grew to 84. So we gained 13 kids, and we had a similar bump of 10 as we went from first grade to second grade.
I'm going to invite David and Carrie in, up to the podium, and so they can answer that specific question.
And then the one last thing is, looking at Moheramit, we had that, those two big classes, and now the current fourth grade, which has 90 kids, will be departing. And as of now, and knowing that could change, we're replacing that with a kindergarten of 52, which is a loss of 38. Is that, are those numbers correct?
Yes. I mean, David's population will be going down. Yep.
Just the, the class size, the class size recommendation numbers are what we hit up against, for one, with the space of our classrooms as well, and then the opportunity to bring families back. That's the other piece of this, is that this year, due to the different disparities between the schools and the classrooms, we've had a number of families who have been placed at the other, you know, elementary school, the one that doesn't match their address. And while we know the education is wonderful, what it does for transportation, and what it does for their neighborhood, and students who are being driven to one school, and then transferring to another bus, and then going to another school, being able to give them the opportunity to come back, especially when they're in first or second grade, and they still have a number of years to go in elementary school, having that three, four class gives us the ability to do that. Even if that doesn't happen, giving, having the three, four class gives us the opportunity to accept new enrollments, because we also know, sort of like the questions you were asking about the middle school, we can't project exactly what's going to happen, but we know that we will get new students throughout the year, we always do. And so that would give us some wiggle room in there as well.
Right. So that makes sense. One thing I think might be interesting to figure out is if that bump from kindergarten to first grade, did they represent new families in our community, or did they represent families who opted out of our full-day K, did a part-time K, and now are joining our system? Because that might help inform us in growth.
I think most of them are new families.
New family, wow. So that indicates a growth.
Yeah.
But we also know that some of the kindergarten programs are ending, that are outside of the district. So some of the options that have been available in the past for families are no longer options as well. So those are families who have been in the district, who just are now coming to us.
Great. Thank you.
Would we ever consider a split K-1 class?
We did a multi-age 1-2 class, and it was challenging. I think, I've done, I've done different configurations here and in other districts. It depends upon the grade configurations being together, and also, I feel strongly about having partner teachers, so that if you do want to kind of separate out for certain curriculum areas, you can, and that you have a partnership in balancing two grade levels, and it's a lot.
I also think that there's a philosophy behind a multi-age classroom that is separate from using it as a solution for numbers. And I totally recognize that we have to make these decisions based on numbers as well, so I'm not putting that aside. But when you make, create a multi-age class, there is a thought process that goes behind that. There's an impact on the children and an expectation for their time, so it's usually more than a one-year commitment, and there has to be an expectation of, for example, if there's an aide in the kindergarten class and there's students new coming in, how that all manages, how they switch to first grade. And then, are we believing in that model, and are we using it, and does it match our curriculum? Or are we just using it as a solution for numbers? And those are sometimes contrary to each other a little bit.
Yeah. How small is too small for a kindergarten class?
Too small?
Yeah.
I've never heard of too small in kindergarten.
Yeah. I mean, from an educational, from an education point of view, five children would be a great class.
There's research, Michael, that the ideal class size for a kindergarten first grade is 14. That would be what the research would support.
Mm-hmm.
Other questions? All right. Thank you. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
So that will be continued. Last year, for the first time, the school board was asked to authorize the board chair to sign the general assurance document from the Department of Education that goes to the Department of Education and the federal government. Historically, I mean, for generations, from the inception of this document, this was signed by the superintendent alone. And basically, it just says, "We'll comply with all the federal requirements related to accountability, financial accountability." So the board last year authorized Tom to sign this along with me. So I'd need a motion from the board that would allow Tom to sign the general assurances form.
I move that we allow Tom Newkirk to sign the general assurances form.
Is there a second? Okay, Brian. All those in favor? All right. Six in favor, and the student rep in favor.
Thank you. Normally, this is something that Tom would do when we lose somebody who's been connected to the district. We lost Gerald Smith. Gerald Smith was the moderator for the school system from 1974 and '75 school year to the '82, '83 school year. I just thought it would be nice for us to just recognize his service to the district and how much we appreciated that service during that time period. I also need another motion from the board to establish the last day of school. Based on our calendar, it would be June, Wednesday, June 19th. Since that's a calendar issue, it requires the board to take action.
I just have a question about that. So how many days into the snow days does it extend? I didn't actually look at the calendar. Three days? Okay.
And the reason we do this is because parents are constantly asking, "When's the last day of school?" This gives them the freedom to do their summer vacations, and staff also ask because of college courses and those kinds of things. So once, I mean, this year is so dramatically different than last year, it's easy for us to establish it tonight. Although we did have snow this morning.
That makes the assumption we won't have any more school closure?
That is the assumption.
All right.
It did snow this morning.
And we've had floods in other years, but.
That's true.
Knowing how powerful Dr. Morse is, and that nothing would happen to throw this offline, I would move that June 19th be the day that we make that the last day of school.
Okay. Can we, and.
I'll second.
Michael, second? All in favor?
I thought Yasmeen would vote against that.
She wants the 13th.
Yeah, sure. All right. Thank you. Do you want me to do the nomination of Heather right now, Denise?
Sure.
Okay. So we had a surprise, from my perspective. Wonderful surprise, but it was still a surprise. Heather, our Director of Counseling, who used to be a counselor for us and then assumed the mantle of administration, has asked that she return to counseling. And it's really about how young her children are and the demands of administration and night meetings and so forth. And I can think of no one better qualified than Heather to take on the role of a counselor here at the high school. And so I would nominate her to you this evening as the fourth counselor at the high school. What that does is it opens up the Director of Counseling position, which we would advertise starting tomorrow.
All right. Is there a motion? Make a motion?
So I move that we approve Heather McEnoff to return to her role as a high school counselor with the budgeted amount of $96,000 issue.
Moved by Kenny?
I'll second. And I would just want to comment. I just, I think Heather grew with us, and I think one of our board missions, really from the get-go, is this board began to establish. And I think one of our board missions, really from the get-go, as this board began to establish itself, was our great concern about the mental health and well-being of the children in our district. And I think it was new for us, and it was uncharted territory. It was new for Heather. And I think she displayed amazing growth through this period and has really worked incredibly hard to establish a program that is really kid-centric, that really is addressing our kids' needs. I mean, the seeds are more than sown. The program is growing, and I'm really proud of what we're doing from that perspective. And I don't think it would have happened without Heather's passion in it and expertise in it. And so thank you, Heather.
Thank you, Ken. That was very nice.
All ready to vote? All in favor? Six in favor, the student rep in favor.
Then the last thing I would ask the board to consider is, you know, when we did the teacher retirement incentive, we actually had three staff members come forward who had not expressed interest in retiring. And my best guess is that just on those three people, the district will save about $70,000 in staffing, assuming that we use Jay Richard's theory of staffing, which is hire the best, but it doesn't necessarily mean the most expensive. The support staff have asked if the board would consider something similar for them. You have three different unions and then one non-bargaining group. I gave you a spreadsheet that gives you some of the ages of our support staff. Our oldest support staff member is 83. We have 76-year-olds and 75-year-olds. So a lot of our senior, senior staff, I think, in the support group work because they love to come to work, truly. I mean, that's the only explanation I can, that I can have, that it revitalizes them and gives them a social network and so forth. But others, you know, could, could be considering retirement if an incentive was offered. With the teachers, we offered $20,000 or 30%. With the support staff, where their salaries are so much lower, I would suggest $8,000 or 20%. For some people, that would mean $1,200 as an incentive. Others, it would mean the full $8,000 as an incentive. But I'd ask the board to consider that. I do think it's worth, worth your consideration. I would suggest the possibility of two people from each unit as, as the goal, and I'd ask for your guidance.
I think that to, if, and I understand what you're saying, is that not everyone's going to probably take the incentive, but I, I would be concerned about the amount if all eight took, took the incentive. And so I would like to suggest that maybe we approve one from each of the units instead of two from each of the units, as a maximum.
So, I mean, I, given that you're, given us bad financial news to start with and our needs, my thought really would be to stagger the teacher and the paras. I don't really think it's a great idea to do them at the same time, particularly when we have a hole to fill to come up with money. The other thought is, can you give me what the savings, projected savings would be?
So looking at the larger salaries, and I would say that there's a possibility of $15,000 in a respa, possibility of probably as much as $40,000 in the, if, I'm just looking at all of those salaries, if all of those people retired, just giving you a general answer, Al, based on what I would expect would happen. It's probably as much as $40,000 in the non-union. And then in the ORBDA group and the ORPAS group, it's, it's probably peanuts. But if you're going to offer it, I think you need to offer it across the board. So, I mean, you know, when you're looking at somebody who only makes $6,000, in the first place, it would be, that question would be, do you need to replace that worker? You know, that's a whole different conversation. And if we do, then there's probably minimal savings, if, if any, there. So the, the larger the salary, the greater the potential. The smaller the salary, not so much.
I got it.
Is there anyone who have a motion? Is there anyone who would like to make a motion?
Can we wait till next meeting?
Sure.
I, I prefer not to make a motion of something I just picked up, like, and haven't even had an opportunity to really look through. I don't think that's a good idea, personally.
All right. So we'll.
Table, table until next meeting?
Was there any thought, rather than having the set amount, and I think you mentioned $8,000, instead to have a certain percentage of current wage? You know, if someone's making $20,000 and someone's making, here's the high, I think, is $63,000, should those both be offered the same incentive? Or should it be more of a proportional thing to what the wage is? When we do it with teachers, most of them are at the top of the scale, so that wage is pretty much the same. But these are very disparate.
I can look at that, Kenny, for the next meeting. All right. Well, thank you. And that completes my report. Denise?
Business administrator.
Good evening. I have two items for you this evening. The first one is the bus bid. Lisa's here at eight. Anyways, we went out to bid for the buses. We have two 77-passenger buses to replace and one wheelchair bus, two vans. At this point in time, we are recommending two 77s for a lease with the money we have in the budget, and one wheelchair bus for a five-year lease. And then we will go out for the vans at a later date. Let's see, we have WC Cressy for both of them. They came in at the low bid, and actually, they're the bus that the drivers prefer. And I will, as far as the lease, I will be back for official approval for a lease agreement. But we want to move forward and at least get the order in because there is a three-to-four month lead time on manufacturing these buses.
Okay. So can we have a motion to approve the bus bid? Brian, is there a second?
I'll second.
Dan, discussion? All in favor? Okay, six in favor, the student rep in favor.
Thank you. And the other item I have is the annual audit. You receive the management letter in your packet that's basically, tells you everything that you would probably need to know. You could have gone out online and read the audit. I'm sure you all did that, correct? And I'm happy to answer any questions you have on the actual audit. I have it here in hard copy. It's pages and pages. I can tell you that, you know, just in, after our reviewing it, we have to go back and look and see how they all fit into our books because there were 21 reclassing entries because they have to report differently than we track. So I guess I, I have to say that I struggle when someone asks me questions about it because it's hard to present, you know, this information. And it is governed by the federal government, Government Accounting Standards Board. And yeah, that's all I can say. Questions? Basically, the management letter tells you that we had a couple of items that they noted, very minor items. One of them was last year, it's been resolved. Single audit, we had a single audit this year because we did reach a 750. So that's also posted online. And then we have to prepare for yet another GASB statement, and that deals with activity accounts and whether or not we need to get that voter approved and have the treasurer sign those checks. So that will be interesting to see how that shakes out. But other than that, questions about the audit? And certainly, if you want to look at it and talk with me privately, have specific questions, I'm happy to do that, too.
Will the other GASB on leases affect us in any material way?
Yeah. So that one's interesting. And I think that's come about because a lot of building projects are now going to leases. So yeah, we've had a discussion about that, and I understand that. So it'll just mean that we put it in a different budget account. Currently, we now have it in the operating budget in the CIP. So we will probably put it in the district account with the bonds. Where we have, you know, we have bonds and interest as separate. It'll be lease and, lease payment, lease interest. That's what they're suggesting. That's the difference in that one.
But it doesn't affect?
It doesn't affect the overall position. It's just how you present it and where, where it shows up. That's basically what all of the GASB recommendations or procurements mean. It's how you present it. Some of the things, well, one of the big things that we now have on your books, and if you look at our books, you'll see this big negative number, that's the unfunded liability for New Hampshire Retirement. It's a number. It doesn't really affect it, but it has to be reported. So those are the kind of things you'll see on the audit report.
Used to show up on the state's books.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Student senate report.
To start off, I wanted to congratulate Ms. Milliken for being nominated for Teacher of the Year Award for the state of New Hampshire, which is pretty impressive. The Scholar-Athlete Ceremony just happened yesterday. And next week is PSATs and SATs for sophomores and juniors. And on the same night, there's going to be a college financial aid night. April 10th is the beginning of the fourth quarter, and April 13th is the National History Day competition. And tomorrow, the DSU, which is the Diverse Students Union, which is what I'm a part of, is going to, down to Dover High School to go to an event called Dream, which is basically like a place where we get trained on how to have conversations around race. So that's going to be pretty interesting to go to.
What's the date of that, Yasmeen?
Tomorrow, it's going to be April 4th.
The 4th of May?
April, for tomorrow.
Oh, it's tomorrow?
Yeah.
Wow. Excellent.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Let's see. Sustainability report.
Hi, I'm Jacqueline Brune, Sustainability Coordinator.
And I'm Maggie Morrison, Sustainability Coordinator.
So we're going to talk about a couple of things tonight. In your packet is a very sort of brief overview, the last year, kind of the last two years, what we've done. And then added today was an article from the Journal of Sustainability Education. So I'm going to read just a little piece of that because we wanted to take just a little bit of a deep dive into Education for Sustainability. The acronym is EFS, and we referenced that at the top of the handout that was in your packet. Education for Sustainability functions as a powerful rationale for teaching and learning in the 21st century. It can be defined as a transformative learning process that equips students, teachers, schools, and informal educators with the knowledge and ways of thinking that society needs to achieve economic prosperity and responsible citizenship while restoring the health of the living systems upon which our lives depend. Education for Sustainability explicitly recognizes the role of teaching and learning in shaping the future we want. In this context, sustainability is viewed as a preferred condition. Currently, there is a large gap between society's aspirations for a healthy and sustainable future and the knowledge, skills, and attitudes being taught and acquired in the majority of K-12 schools. A long-term goal of the field of Education for Sustainability is to demonstrate the unique value of sustainability as a context for the whole school and curriculum and for the larger community.
In the six years I've held this position, this community-supported initiative has evolved and continues to be nimble and responsive to the needs of teachers, students, and administrators. For example, this year, we had three UNH interns to help with our after-school programming and as a transportation fellow. Today, 4th graders from Moheramit and Massway learned about solar and alternative energy at Durham Solar Field. As you know, we took six students to the Youth Climate Leaders Academy in Vermont this fall. We recently gathered a Next Step, Steps working group to look forward to the next few years. Using the framework of Education Educating for Sustainability with the goal to deepen this culture of sustainability in all the schools in the community, the working group is looking for next steps as a sustainability integrator, which would be a halftime position that works with all schools. This position would work closely with Todd Allen to develop an Education for Sustainability leadership team. Just wondering if you have any questions about what we've done this year or about the framework of EFS.
Could you talk a little bit more about the elementary school sustainability programming? I know that you said that you took them out to see the solar. Was there other, other things that were done at the elementary level? Because it said you implemented the elementary-level after-school sustainability programming?
We had a Earth Ambassadors Program for 4th graders. It was a six-week program in which we offered that to all 4th graders at Massway. We also did that at Moheramit last year as well.
And what was involved in that?
The, so the content material? What was the content? So it changed, we, last year, we had an intern that we worked with. This year, we handed it off to two interns that developed it. So they did a variety of things. There was a day that they looked at endangered species. They did a composting day. They sorted through trash and looked at what was in the trash and talked about what should, where the trash should be going at the school. I'm missing two days. Seed balls?
Yeah.
And then we made, we did a day where we, the kids made seed balls to tie into the endangered species. We were using lupin seeds for the Carson Blue Butterfly, which is an endangered butterfly that needs the lupin plant, the common lupin. So we did that as well. So it was, it was, it was a rich program. What we find with, the challenge with the after-school at the elementary level is the kids really are ready to be outside and moving and, and content. Sitting and focusing isn't so much what they want to be doing as, which makes sense, you know, as a parent, that they weren't, they're not quite ready for it. We'd rather see this as a program that happens integrated in the 4th grade and working with the teachers so that we would still use our UNH interns, but it would be modules, like maybe a six-week session where the, the interns would come into the classroom, do these sessions over a period of time, as opposed to having it as an after-school activity.
I think to that point, and maybe it's happening, but to me, the school gardens are just the perfect place to get kids out of the classroom. But the wealth of knowledge from there, learning about soils, learning about plants, learning about what parts of the plant we eat, learning about seeds, math is involved in that, and it's active learning. So I, I don't know how much we're utilizing those school gardens and then getting into nutrition and getting into.
The teachers are.
The agriculture system in our country, just so much knowledge to come.
Yeah. The teachers in, even the high school as well, there's gardens at all the levels. And two, not this past summer, two summers ago, Jim Rozicki and I worked closely together to do a lot of work on the gardens, especially in the Massway courtyard and at Moheramit. And so that's, it's not something we've offered support as they needed, the teachers, around the gardening. But they're pretty much doing their thing in the gardens. It's not, it's not through us. And they know they can, you know, and I'll answer questions. My background is as a master gardener. And so every now and then, we'll, they'll have questions or need resources, but the teachers are doing a lot of gardening.
So first of all, thank you for all of your work. I'm going to go to where it says administration, where it says, "Continue support efforts by facility department to manage three streams of waste at all schools." So as anyone who's read the newspaper knows, the solid waste management has completely changed. And so I And so I think what I often find, it's weird, because Kenny and I both wear two hats, the school focuses on sustainability within the school system and is remarkably detached from the community. And so while they're focused on your three streams, we in the community are grappling with a, a really significant change in our solid waste contract. We are beginning in Durham, where in May, we're coming forward with a presentation on pay-as-you-throw to the town council and doing two public sessions. I could not think of any better opportunity for your sustainability students to see a presentation to, soup to nuts, from like presentation to actual implementation, and it is like every single solid waste program in the Seacoast is grappling with this problem. And it's, so I, I, I look at what you guys are doing, and I would really like you guys, I mean, I can only extend a hand, I hope you guys reach out and take it, but it would be nice if you guys actually kind of became more aware outside of yourselves, to integrate with the community and be part of what is a solid thing, because while you teach everything at the school to throw in those bins, they go home at the end of the day. And everybody's in Durham is going to live with what we're implementing. So I, I think that's my first suggestion. I think it's a really, really big thing. The second was, I mean, ironically enough, I kind of circled it, which is the recommendation at the high school, which is the Sustainability Club. And it was like, I think having an after-school club is not sustainable, ironically enough. It is like, so I, I saw like John Bromley, what he did today is really wisely implement using flax and working with that, because I think that's the way to do it. I think while an after-school program may work at the elementary level, it's certainly not going to work at the high school level, no way, not with all the activities and sports that are going on. So it's a rethinking of how that is working. And then the third thing I'll throw out there is the, what I have coined the plastic conundrum. And the plastic conundrum is, we have forgotten, it seems, but we have this, we make money off of plastic bottles, we kind of grappled with how to deal with it. And so, I don't know, what I'm hearing, and I may be wrong, is we've now implemented smoothing. It's not enough that we had plastic bottles, but we then have now added a smoothie machine that asks, adds a plastic cup, a plastic lid, and a plastic straw. So we're kind of moving in the wrong direction. So my question, we had grappled with this for sustainability, this is a real-life thing, this is $60,000 in our budget. You want a real-life in-service thing? Give us an answer, a solution, or grapple with that problem of how do we deal with a plastic conundrum? So those are my two soup, soapbox things. But again, I think, one, integrating more with the community in a real-life problem, and two, internally, dealing with plastic, because plastic is clearly one of the most significant issues that we face.
And I think, Al, that's a fabulous point, of bringing in this whole idea of looking at sustainability and looking at it as a community issue, and how can we get our students involved in real world, what's really happening today in our community? And so we, we've talked about that already. So I think we'll have to connect with John on that. And then the plastic, the Veep students are really committed to working on the plastic. They were the ones that told me, Maggie and I, about the new smoothie machines with the lids and the straws, and they're very popular, and they actually...
Totally.
And they have them at the middle school, too, which I learned from my STEC kids, that they're very popular.
So we've accelerated our problem. The plastic conundrum has not declined, it's grown, because now we make more money off of plastic.
Right. So it's, yeah, I, I mean, I think it's, I would really like to see, to the extent that it's possible, to have the students really work through that problem, and they've already started talking about, can we talk to food service about having reusable smoothie cups and foregoing the lids and maybe some kind of metal straws? And so I think to the extent that we can have students have the ideas come up through the students, as opposed to us saying, this is how you're going to do it, or this is how we're going to fix this, I think it's going to be a much more sustainable change. I don't know if you...
No, I think it's a learning opportunity for the students. They're going to have to deal with this problem. They're going to grow up and have to live in their own communities, so they need to become the problem solvers.
But I think to Al's point, and I agree completely, and also love the work that you're doing, we're giving mixed messages, because we're giving the message, oh, you can throw your plastic in this bin, and isn't it great you're recycling the plastic, but knowing there's no market for the plastic anymore. We talked about trying to get rid of water and bottles, and then all of a sudden, we present students with, rather than water, we provide them with these wonderful, sweet, whatever, smoothies, and we're telling them, no, it's okay, because then you can just put the plastic right in that bin and everything's fine. And I agree with you that when things originate from the bottom up, it's really much more sustainable, it's much more of a learning effort. But I think we, as leaders, sustainability coordinators, need to help shape that kind of process and, and to be very involved in that. And as Al said, he's willing to be involved, and I'm willing to be involved as well, because I agree, we're drowning in plastic, you know, and, you know, New York State just banned plastic bags, you know, there's legislation in Concord to try to do away with plastic bags in our state. But we keep, think of the plastic we go through, day after day after day, that we really don't need, and somehow, I think we really should try to change that conversation.
Well, we're looking for short-term gain, which is the money that you need for the budget versus the long-term consequences, so...
But I think as we talked about with our plastic bottles, right, it's money, but it's tainted money, and I think we should, as a school board, too, I think we're obligated to find ways to fund, help supplement our budget without money that's coming with a high price to be paid by future generations. So it's on us.
And what I'll throw out there, too, is like, so as I hold up this, this is, this, when, when kids recycle, there's some, recycling is, it used to be we made money off of recycling. We don't make money off recycling. This costs $135 a ton to recycle. If I throw it in the garbage, it costs 70. So it is, it is profoundly changed. So I think students need to understand that it, communities are grappling with the idea just to completely scrap recycling altogether. It's like, in Durham, we have gone from single stream to split stream. We're using the value of cardboard to bring paper down to $100 a ton, and we're using metal to bring glass, which is absolutely worthless and heavy, and plastic, down to $35 a ton. So it's like, it, students need to, I mean, I, I think they need to understand this. They don't really have a sense of how profound...
We all need to understand it, Al, not just the students.
That's a good point. All right. Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for what you do.
Okay, so, School Board Committee Assignments. So I believe, and it, the, there's a, that basically, I don't know if there's anyone that wants to make a change. I know that Brian has volunteered to be on the Policy Committee to replace Tom, who feels like he's very involved in the middle school plans right now and has, kind of has his hands full, and so, so Brian has volunteered to take over Tom's spot for that. Is there, are there any other changes? I would like to see.
I think that first committee is no longer in existence.
Yes, the, the Facilities Committee, that is correct. We no longer need the Facilities Committee.
Michael, did Todd have, Tom have a chance to talk to you about his idea related to the board reporting?
Uh, yeah.
Okay, is that okay with you?
Yep.
That's right, thank you for reminding me. Yes, so Michael, to be writing up the articles that would...
Reflect our board meetings. And also, Michael, I had said that as, if you're willing, and Tom is willing, that, and Brian as well, as Jay and Todd and I write one-pagers, themed one-pagers around the new middle school, would the three of you be willing to kind of give them an overview and make suggestions, editing suggestions? You don't have to, you don't have to write them, we'll write them, but it'd be good to have a set of eyes look at them from the committee, and then once we get your feedback, we'll keep them up and publish them. And the idea is, we will try to create one-pagers on different themes on the middle school as part of our communications effort. Is that okay?
So I believe we, do we need, do we need a motion for the committee assignments or not?
I think they're pointed.
Yeah, so these are Tom's appointments.
All right.
If everybody's agreeable, then...
We're good, we're good with Tom's appointments, then, okay. I am looking at the time, and we're, it's already nine o'clock. I'm wondering if maybe we should take a five-minute break before we move on to taking a look at this strategic plan.
Absolutely.
Okay, all right, five minutes in. Okay, are we ready? Get back into...
That's such a huge asset, to have that, it's like...
Todd, we're married.
Yeah. It's a good one, Tim. I told you, it's clear as anything comes through your eyes.
Okay, so strategic plan.
So initially, we had planned to make this the first read of the strategic plan, much like we do policy, but I was unable to get the completed plan out to you in a way that you'd have it for, you know, a week or so, which was my intent. What I did was went through one more phase of editing with the administrators, sent their sections out to them, asked them to review it one more time, attempted to make all the changes that the board had asked. So tonight really is just a brief feedback loop, if you will. We'll come back to this in two weeks as the first read, but if there are things that stand out to you that we didn't quite hit in the revisions, this would be a good time to tell me, and we'll take that shot in the next two weeks and see if we get it closer. Tom has provided written changes that he'd like to see, and I could just share those with the board, since he's not here to share them. He wanted the language on Common Assessments in the middle school. He felt it hadn't been changed, that any reference to common exams should be removed, and creating a common exam is a very time-consuming and is unlike, the teams can do this on a monthly basis. So he's concerned about the workload and the idea that every exam would be common. And we actually agree with that, and clearly, we didn't make the changes that reflected that. The language for the extension of foreign language should be modified. Tom's feeling on that is it's, it's, we, the board itself has made no determination to extend instruction into the middle, elementary schools, and that's a process that we need to go through as a board before it's included in the strategic plan. And his last comment was that in the succession plan, a one-year overlap should be put forward as an option, not as a fait accompli. And so those were his three, his three thoughts, and certainly, if everybody's in agreement at, at the table, we'll, we'll modify those. Actually, two of those three thoughts were part of the collective conversation last time we had, so I know that it's consistent with what, what you all wanted. Are there any other, any other obvious places where the school committee would, the school board, like to see us modify language or add language that we missed?
I just have two comments, and they're all comments, but I guess I feel I always need to keep making them. In reading the Transportation Strategic Plan, I continue to feel we're really missing a big issue by not looking at what scheme we use for transportation, and instead of making the modifications that are made here, I have a feeling our transportation system is archaic, it's not meeting the goals or the needs of our community, it's leading to incredibly more fossil fuel use, whether... So that, in terms of like, softening the language, I really, what I'm, the softening the language really was, I think, in fiscal year, is that 1920? Is that the first one? Because we were potentially talking about the fall. And it, to me, it doesn't make a lot of sense to like, hard and fast, say we're going to have it in 1920, if we, to not allow the things that we've put in place to study it to work. Why would we have given a sabbatical on foreign language study if we, it's already, we've already decided it? So it doesn't, I think we want to let the process play. I think all we've really done is kind of softened the 1920 year to kind of move it to, it's at 2021. That's my two cents. But I think that is a discussion we want to have.
Yeah, it's obviously something where the board needs to get engaged. Michael, did you have?
Yeah, I have a few, I have a few points to add to the conversation. On that one specifically, maybe one thing we want to do is make the, one of the world language annual goals even more explicit in terms of specifically updating the strategic plan. So we talked about developing a plan, but if we were to say to ourselves, to our future selves, that by the end of the next school year, we want to update the strategic plan based on all the work that the committee and the sabbatical are doing.
The input from that.
That would be a more concrete reminder to us to go back and look at the whole, the whole five-year plan.
Yeah, it'd make more sense.
There are a couple of things I think might be helpful, or at least worth thinking about adding in general. One is a communication goal. And I haven't given this a great deal of detailed thought, but I think it would be around making sure that we're using appropriate methods to reach both the school and non-school communities, and even stakeholders and partners outside of the immediate community. We think we've been more active in terms of looking at legislation recently than we have in the past, and that by itself might merit a more thoughtful, long-term approach to how we engage with other districts around the state. I still think having somebody whose job it is to be our communications expert is probably worthwhile. And so in terms of what went into that detail, I would, I would support a creation of a position at some point in time to specialize in communications. Another one would be, we have, we have a number of different ways of looking at our programs and what kind of programs we want in the future. I think it would be interesting to consider a specifically outward-looking group that is tasked with looking for best practices, progressive techniques, just kind of across the board outside of the district, open-ended, what's new? And taking an assessment of, should we be thinking about bringing these things into the district? So actively, actively spending some time looking outward. On a more specific note, I appreciate the conversation we had earlier around safe zone training, and I would totally support including that as a specific element of this, of the plan. And there's one, you know, building off of what you said, Kenny, on transportation, I'm not ready to sign on for the electric bus fleet objective. I think that that needs some more thought before we get to having that really as a goal. So I'm not, I'm not in favor of the way that's laid out at this point in time. And then finally, I really appreciate the budget breakdown, or budgetary impact, potential budgetary impact breakdown that you gave us last time. I think there are some things that are significant contributors of that that are not there, such as the electrified bus, electric bus item was not in there. Additional administration to have overlap in either the superintendent or the business administrator succession planning is not in there. So I think it would be helpful to have, now that we have a updated, complete updated package, to go through and try to capture what the budget impact would be.
Will do. Thank you. Dan, did you have any suggestions?
Just a thought on the earlier conversation in terms, I think there's an opportunity to sort of frame the context of the strategic plan with some sort of a foreword that the board could.
Yeah, we haven't, we would create a whole introduction to the plan that we haven't created yet. We just get these nuts and bolts pieces done, and then we'll, we'll create the introduction.
Right. So I mean, I share, I share those same concerns about being, you know, maybe too concrete in stating that this will happen at this time. But as, you know, as Kenny said, it's a living document. It's a, it's a path forward. And if we make it clear that, you know, this is a vision at a point in time that will change, I think we can allay a lot of those concerns where folks might take that concrete view of, well, you said at this point, this will happen, and you didn't do it. We can address that.
Yep. All right. Brian, did you have anything?
No, actually, they stole all my thunder.
Good.
I was just going to say thank you to the staff for coming to all of these multiple meetings at nighttime when you have the daytime stuff to do. It was really, it was really appreciated.
There's light at the end of the tunnel.
Yeah.
So I do have a couple more.
You have a couple more, Denise?
I am, I am definitely, because I am looking at the staffing breakdown and adding all these positions, it's like half a million dollars, is a lot of money. So I'm looking at certain ones, and I'm just not sure. As we heard tonight about the sustainability coordinator, I can certainly understand, you know, the, what the intent is. I'm not sure that, again, I, you know, to specifically say in the strategic plan that we're going to develop a budget and job description for the sustainability coordinator, I don't know that I can be on board with that, because I am looking at, you know, we're going to have to maybe need a new kindergarten teacher, you know, I'm just really mindful with the middle school coming on board and other maybe necessary positions. I just, you know, I just don't know that I can say, okay, yes, let's add this position.
Plus the flattening of the revenue barrier.
Exactly, exactly. So I'm concerned about that one.
Were there other positions as well?
The other were, there was the, also the SEL coordinator, which I'm not sure is quite reflected. Part of it was sort of the wording on the sheet was a little different than in the strategic plan. In the strategic plan, it's listed as the K4 SEL coordinator to support Mastway and Mohammed. I'm not exactly sure, because it's not listed that way here, just mental health, one position. So I am somewhat concerned about, well, I certainly understand, again, you know, we wanted to expand the high school, we've added a counselor position. I'm just not sure that that, that's another position that I would have some concerns about. So, yeah, those were kind of the two areas that I just have concerns about creating new positions at this time.
So I think tonight's conversation is really helpful, because, you know, just in terms of this conversation, you can see where there's agreement, and you also can see where it's going to be a spirited discussion in relation to some of these issues. So this was helpful. I'll take a stab at the simple things where I don't think there's any controversy, and then we'll have the big conversation in the first read at the next meeting. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right.
I also wanted to point out, before we leave the strategic plan, that Jim had provided the capital improvement plan that he projects over the five years, and that was a direct request of Michael, so he could, and all of us could see where we were headed and how we were matching our capital plan against the middle school. And so Jim did a really nice job putting it together, and that can feed into the conversation in two weeks as well. Thank you, Jim.
Yeah.
Okay. So it looks like we are down to motion to nominate and approve non-tenured contract professional staff members.
And this was the question that Michael asked the last time when these people come up, they come up tonight. And all of these people have been evaluated by their supervisors and have been nominated to me for can, to come back next year, and I'm nominating them to you.
Can I have a motion?
So I'll move to, to approve the non-tenured contract professional staff members as submitted by the superintendent.
Okay. Second?
Second.
Okay. Dan, second. Any other discussion? Okay, all in favor? Six in favor. Motion to approve the Oyster River Middle School 2019-20 leave of absence. Brian?
Motion to approve, as requested.
Okay. Moved by Brian, second by Al. All in favor? Six in favor. Motion to approve the Oyster River High School spring coaches and volunteers.
So moved.
Al, second. Oh, Brian? Okay, all in favor? Six in favor. Motion to approve the list of policies for second read and adoption.
I move that we approve on second read, so for adoption, sabbatical leave, policy G-C-B-D.
Okay. And second, Brian? All in favor? Okay, six in favor. School board committee updates. I will say that the manifest committee met, and manifest was approved.
We fulfilled our destiny.
Yes. Any other committee updates? None? Okay. Future meeting dates, our next meeting is April 17.
And just a reminder that we are doing the middle school presentation at Mohammed on the 10th. And if you can attend, that's great.
Okay. So we don't have a non-public meeting, so a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Al, and second by Michael, and all in favor. We are adjourned.
I had a, I had a comment before we voted.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I just wanted to say that Denise did a wonderful job chairing the meeting, and thank you for stepping in, Denise.
Thank you.